Good evening and welcome to the January 29th, 2024 study session of the Livonia City Council. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Honorable Councilwoman Carrie Bzinski?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bzinski. All right, this meeting sets the agenda for the nineteen, the 1,986 regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, February 12th, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. Council absences, we have a full house today. We're going to go to the audience. Council set aside 30 minutes for audience communication for items not on the agenda. Do we have any audience communication? Seeing none. Do we have, well, moving on to this, it's going to show council president announcements. I'd like to show that item number four has been moved to the study meeting on February 12th. That is, item number four has been moved to the study meeting of February 12th. Council, do we have any announcements? Seeing none. We're going to move to the audience. Seeing none. I already did that. All right, we're going to rock right into the study agenda with new business. Number one, a request to waive the city's noise ordinance to allow a car show with, with a DJ at St. Colette's Catholic Church, Newburgh Road, on Saturday, June 1st, 2024, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Hello, sir.
Good evening. My name is Robert Race. I'm a member of the Dooley Council of St. Colette Parish. This is our seventh annual car show coming up. I am chairman of it. Laura, I'm also Bentley Bulldog. Okay.
Good going. You graduated.
Yeah. Then I'm here to request the noise abatement waiver so that we may continue to have a DJ at this event, as we have in the past.
Thank you. Mr. Jolly, and then Ms. Toy.
We do get mixed up every now and then.
Jim Callahan.
I'll defer to my, but I want to go second.
Okay. Mr. Race, you've had this for seven years in a row, right? Is that what you just said?
Except for COVID, yes, we have, seven in a row. This is our seventh.
Yeah, I've been to those. You do a great job, by the way. Very nice. And I want to, I want an approving. This is just a well-attended, well-run event.
Thank you.
Is that on consent?
Yeah, if I may.
Yes. Mr. Jolly.
I just, it's, it's always good to take a moment here to point out that Mr. Race hosted me and approximately like 20 other high school kids on a regular basis in his backyard to cause havoc behind the Home Depot over at Hagerty.
I'm still here.
Hagerty and Seven Mile for most of our high school experience. And we were a lot louder than you are for this car show. So there's never been any problems and, you know, Mr. Race, it's always good to see you and we appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
I'm a member of St. Colette and of the Dooley Knights of Columbus. And our vice president is a member of the St. Colette Parish as well, so.
And I just would like to add, I attended the car show last year and it was absolutely fantastic time and I look forward to it again.
Thank you.
Well, you have an approving on consent. If you want to come back to mess with Councilmember Jolly, feel free to. That's on February 12th. But other than that, your matter is all but assured to be passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for what you do for the community.
Don't forget, it's June 1st.
Is Rob, is Councilmember Donovan invited this year?
Oh, yeah. We got to hear back from the Pope on that one.
If we get the noise ordinance.
Don't, don't forget your poodle skirts, lady.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to item number two is a request to approve the budget adjustment from the Office of the Mayor to restore funding to the position of Government Affairs Director.
Good evening, Council, and thank you for the opportunity to approach you with this item. This is a request to restore the funding for the Government Affairs Director. You may recall that in our last budget cycle, this position was eliminated. And quite honestly, it was not included in the budget because we hadn't yet secured all of the funding that we were going to need in order to complete Project Catalyst, which was the relocation of the senior center over to the rec center. Now that that funding has been secured, Project Catalyst is doing its job. It is helping us to move ahead with our downtown development program. And given the fact that this is a huge strategic undertaking that the city is engaged in right now, we really do need another set of hands on deck. And most specifically, we need somebody that has some strong ties to the community to help us to make sure that we're able to carry that message forward about where it is, where we're headed with this strategic initiative in building out our downtown. Secondarily, because of all of that activity and all of the activity that you all want to undertake as a really forward-thinking council, we also need somebody that's going to be a good liaison between the work that you're doing and the work that the administration is doing to make sure that there really is a sound, solid, and cohesive communication opportunity there. The third element of this position that we're interested in reinstating or putting into place, it's different than the position as it was described previously, is that we want to make sure that we are recruiting and retaining as many of our board and commission members as we can. And we have over 150 board and commission members at this point in time. You know, I interview all of them and do a lot of work recruiting and trying to find them. And while that work won't cease, we do need more hands on deck, again, just out there really working to help to, to build that community involvement. Community involvement in our community is a big part of how we get to comprehensive decisions that truly reflect where it is that residents want us to head. So, and then one of the other components, as is typical of the Government Affairs position, is the ongoing monitoring and, you know, just search for grant opportunities. Most of our department heads, quite frankly, are well aware of grant opportunities that are available in their specific field of interest. But occasionally, as is the case with Project Catalyst, there was a lot of money that was available in grant funding that department heads would not have necessarily known was available. So knowing that it's available, but then also knowing who you need to tell that it is available becomes important. As we found with Project Catalyst, most of the work that went into securing that funding was work that came directly out of my office and was my work, quite frankly. But having somebody on board that pointed me in the right direction and said, there's federal money available, you might want to try going after this. We now know state money's available, go in that direction. That becomes really critical to our opportunities to especially look at what we want to do in terms of building out the civic center area. So with all of those elements in place, I am asking that you consider funding this position, beginning in March. March 1st would be our preferred starting date. This is our lowest paid department head, but it is a strategic position. So it does rise to the level of being a department head position. The amount that we're looking to have re-appropriated in the budget, I think, is $94,000. That takes into account healthcare costs, defined contribution, all of the ancillary costs, not just salary that goes along with a position like this. So I put that forward for your consideration. I appreciate the time that each of you has had to talk with me about specifically what the job entails. And I think that I've had the opportunity to speak with all of you about this, I think the exception of Mr. Morgan here. So I think you've got a fully understanding of what it is that we're looking to acquire in terms of capabilities. And it's my hope that you see, as I do, the need for an extra set of hands on deck here as we approach a very busy next year and particularly next four to seven years of activity here in the city. So I appreciate your time, but I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Donovan.
I know this is an important topic. A lot of council members have talked about this. To the mayor's point, she's spoken to multiple council members, not all, but multiple, about this topic. So I think it would be important for maybe to have some more deep dive into it. So I'd like to offer this item for the committee, the whole.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan. So that we do have a motion on the floor for Committee of the Whole. Is that it? Do you have anything else? Anything else from council?
Mr. Chair.
Vice President?
I would support Mr. Donovan's move to Committee of the Whole on this. I have some concerns regarding the financial implications of this position at this time. And I think that a deeper dive by all of us and a conversation needs to be had.
Thank you, Vice President. Anything else? Councilmember Morgan.
Yes, Mayor, since I wasn't the, I was one of the only ones who wasn't really read in on this, I do have a couple of questions on. So this position that, that you're proposing to reinstate here, it sounds like the way you proposed it is it's an extensive search for someone who is very expensive, experienced in legislative experience and something to that effect. It sounded like you were proposing, is that correct?
No, actually, Councilman Morgan, this is a bit of a shift. This is actually going back to more of a position that leans toward the way the Legislative Affairs Director functioned as a liaison between the mayor's office and the council office. Legislative affairs on a state or national or county level even is not the focus of this position. The focus of this position, quite honestly, is to serve as a really solid liaison between the council and the other department heads. And that was a role that at one time was put in place by the council and we operated under it for a long period of time with the Legislative Affairs Director. That Legislative Affairs Director did not have any strategic component to their position. This one does. This one does. This one is responsible for not only being that ultimate communication piece, but also making sure that my office, as well as other department heads, are really read in on what it is that the council's looking to accomplish on its agenda and making sure that that aligns very much with what the administration is looking to accomplish. And then it's also very strategic in trying to make sure that there is that outward-facing piece, that outreach component, that we did happen to have in place with the last Government Affairs position. So it's a little bit more of a hybrid and again, not with a primary focus around legislative affairs.
Okay. All right, you know what, since this is going to Committee of the Whole, I'll save the rest of my questions for that time. Thank you.
Mayor, we have the Committee of the Whole. If you're looking for March, that would put us obviously on the 12th to get the vote. And then we'll see if we can get a Committee of the Whole meeting going right away with you and your team, just to clarify stuff and get it right back on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to item number three, which is a request to approve salary and fringe benefit adjustments for the class specification of police chief and deputy police chief. This comes to us from the Department of Civil Service, the period of December 1st, 2023 through November 30th, 2026.
Good evening. Hello, good evening. I'm Janine Liebel on behalf of our Civil Service Department. In November of 2023, we negotiated a contract with the Livonia Command Officers Association. Historically, we would extend the benefits that we negotiated with them to our police chief and our deputy chief. Specifically in this case, I want to present to you that there will be a wage adjustment. They are scheduled to get a 2.5 increase this year and a 3.5 increase next year as our cost of living increase. In addition, as part of our negotiations, they would get a 2% in advance of those cost of living adjustments.
Well, thank you very much. Council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Jolly.
At this time, I'd like to offer a motion to approve for the consent agenda. It's always been history of the command staff, particularly the chief and deputy chief, that they would go along and receive the same benefits that were collectively bargained for by the other bargaining units. So this is absolutely par for the course and expected when we pass a new collective bargaining agreement. And I believe it's a housekeeping manner, so, thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Donovan.
Thanks, Mr. President. Ms. Liebel, question. In terms of similar communities, is our police chief and deputy chief paid fairly similar to other communities, same-sized police department and population and special operations and all the different things that our police department has? Are they pretty similar to other departments paid? Does this make us competitive with those other departments?
I'd say that our contract did. I can't speak specifically to police chief or deputy chief because I don't have that detail handy, but we did do studies to verify that our officers were comparably, you know, well, you don't want to just be comparably, we think our package is excellent. And I think that our officers were happy with the negotiations as well. But if you want me to do a little bit more of a dive, I can certainly look at that for you.
I appreciate, I was just wondering, you know, looking at these numbers, just to make sure we're able to retain. We've got a great chief and deputy chief and wanted to make sure that we're, these numbers would be competitive with those other departments to make sure they were competitive than.
I believe that they are.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilwoman Toy?
Thank you, if I may, to the petitioner. So you, they are competitive?
Yes.
Okay. With cities our size and everything.
Absolutely. We took a look at what we, what we would call our 312 comparables. And that's where, if we were to go into arbitration, that, those are the cities that we would use as our comps.
Super. And I know, I always know you do a great job on this. What I'd also like to see is some of the numbers for the retirements, when these folks retire. What, what kind of dollars are we talking about as well? When we start looking at these different salaries for some of these professions we have in the city, I'd like to look at retirements as well. Because as we explore dollars now and in the future, I'm kind of cognizant about it and a little bit concerned as we go along, not only the fringes, but those retirements as well.
If, if I may, I can answer that. So for our first, our first responders have a defined benefit program, which is a pension program. And some of our other, our other employees and I believe our chief participate in our defined contribution plan, which is, works a little bit differently. So I have good faith that Mike Slater has taken good care of making sure that our 401A plan is well-funded, as well as our pension board takes good care of our funding on that side.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I know it will depend how many years, et cetera, that they've been in. But I want to make sure what we're paying out, because if it's based on their last three years or the last couple of years, and I'm not trying to only look at police right now, but since this has been brought up, that, that would be helpful as we explore the dollars for this community.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none. You have an approving on consent?
Thank you so very much, everyone. Have a good night.
All right, moving on. So item number four again is being moved to the next meeting on the 12th. We will move to item number five, which is a request to approve software licensing and maintenance agreement with a sole source provider from the Public Works Division with Azteca LLC, including City Works Online for DPW Work Management System from the period of March 1st, 2024 through February 28th, 2025 from budgeted funds.
Evening, Council. Doug Moore with the Department of Public Works. Council, this is our city work software that we use daily, pretty much for everything. We use it for tracking service requests, work orders, payroll, equipment, inventory, et cetera. It's the annual relicensing of it. We've had this since 2016 that came online. And we would just like council to take and consider the licensing agreement and the amount of $96,077.28. It is split equally between the refuse and, refuse account, water and sewer account.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Morgan. Sorry, Ms. Toy.
No, you're fine.
Yeah, I'd like to offer an approving on consent.
Great.
If there's no objection.
Thank you, Councilmember Morgan. Councilwoman Toy.
I was going to do the same, thanks.
Anything else from council? Seeing none? You have an approving on consent?
Thank you.
Any audience communication on that? Seeing none. We are going to move on to item number six, which is an award of bid from the Public Works Division for ready-mixed concrete for the city's 2024 calendar year requirements from budgeted funds. I like to see this because that means spring is coming.
Yes, it is, hopefully. Council, this is our yearly concrete supply for our roads maintenance section. This is the crew that will go out and do some selective slab repair. They'll do some sidewalk repair, curb lines. We bid it out on, in December. We had the bid opening in December. The bid results are, were attached to the package. We had two bidders. It was Superior and Piedmont. They've been the two bidders for the last while. And usually every other year, they flip-flop. This year, Superior came in first, Piedmont came in second. But we would like to have the ability to have both approved in case one of, the low bidder cannot get it.
Yep.
And we can get it from Piedmont.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Burnier, do we need, is it packaged like that or do we need a separate motion for both?
I believe it's packaged like that.
And we'll leave it as, as council. Do I have direction?
I think it is.
We'll move it. I'll move it.
Consent?
Yes, please.
You have an approving on consent? Anything else from council? Seeing none? Anything from the audience? Seeing none? We will move on. You have an approving on consent for that item, Mr. Moore? We will move on to item number seven, which is a request to purchase one cement grinder with a sulky driver from the Department of Public Works to be used by the roads division in the amount not to exceed $44,797,096 from budgeted funds.
So this piece of equipment was approved in the 2024 capital budget. It's a cement scarefire, which is basically a fancy word for a grinder. It'll go out and grind down sidewalk, vertical separations, heaves and pavement. The sulky allows the operator to ride on it so that they won't get tired out. It is a self-driving sulky, so it's got a driver in it. So the operator just sits on it and operates the cement grinder as he's going, or she, as they are going, excuse me. Combined, we found two bidders locally. Ace Tools out of Novi was the low bidder for $44,797,96.
Well, I think we all learned a new term today from the sulky driver and I'm glad you have that. Council, do I have direction?
Mr. Chair.
Vice President Tashnik.
I'll offer an approving on consent for that.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Mr. Moore, you made it easy. You got an approval on consent. Is there any audience comments on that? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to number eight, which is an award of contract from the Department of Public Works for the 2425 municipal park mowing program, which involves approximately 136 acres of parks, cemeteries and fire station property from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore?
Council, this was, we had a pre-bid meeting on December 13th. The bid opening was on December 19th. We had 10 contractors at the meeting. We had eight bidder, we had eight bids received. This contract's to mow 32 parks, three fire stations, two cemeteries, covering approximately 125 acres. Most of these parks are non-recreational parks, they're just open areas out in subdivisions. The low bidder meeting specifications is Ground Control Property Services of New Boston. We are asking council to approve both the low bidder and the second low bidder. The last time that we bid this contract, in 2021, the low bidder was unable to meet his pricing. So we had to do it ourselves and we had to do it ourselves last year. So we're kind of excited to have a bidder this year. But we would like to get both of them approved. And the two-year bid was approximately $98,000 for the low bidder. It's a two-year program, 2024 and 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Councilman Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks, Mr. Moore, for being here. So I was looking at reviewing the packet and so we're actually accepting two different bidders, one for 49K, $49,000, and the second one for $87,000. Is this because neither bidder can just do all the, all the properties themselves? We have to go to two companies?
The low bidder would be the winning bidder. They would have everything. We're asking to approve the second low bidder in case the low bidder walks away from the program.
Okay, so we're going to pay Ground Control Property Services $49,000 so long as they can finish it. In the event that they cannot finish it, then we'd actually be paying Brantley Development out of Inxter, $87,000.
Yes, correct.
So do we pay these contractors as they go? Or do we give them the full $48,000 and ask for a refund?
We pay them as, as they go. They, it's a, parks are cut two times a month. After each mowing cycle, a cycle is a two-week period, they will present a bill. We will pay them for that work. After the second cut in the month, we will pay them for that work and continue that way. If they do not mow, if, let's say in August, we have a really dry month, they only mow once, we only pay them that one month. If we get to October and we have to have them mow three times because of the leaves, they'd get a third payment.
Okay, and do they take care of things like weeds at City Hall or is that all handled in there?
That's parks, that would be DPW Park Maintenance. These are only parks like Bean Park, now you got me on the spot, now I got to think. Dover Park, Baylin at the corner of Merriman and Linden.
Yeah.
Just the park, most of the parks don't have anything in them. A few have play structures, no ball diamonds, no soccer fields, that stays with DPW.
This should help alleviate a lot of stress on the DPW staff to focus on these smaller areas.
Yes.
And then my last question is sort of checks and balances. What happens is, because you know, as council, we'll get complaints from residents sometimes and they're, they're valid concerns about the grass not being cut very, very well, there are piles of grass clippings laying out in the road and those sorts of things. And that happens when we're short-staffed and it's hard to do quality control. But through the quality control process, now does this alleviate stress in staffing so that you guys can make sure they're doing a good job and we can verify that?
We will have supervisors and managers checking on the contractors constantly.
Awesome, okay. I'd like to offer an approving on consent and there's no objection from my colleagues.
Actually, I'd like to ask a couple of questions first. It's okay.
Vice President Tashnik, it's yours.
Thank you. Through the chair to Mr. Moore. I'm just looking at the bids, there's a huge disparity between the lowest bidder and the second bidder. I mean, when I'm looking at a two-year contract, it's a $76,000 difference. Is there any explanation, I guess, for that disparity?
Sharpening pencils.
I mean, I get some of the other ones, I mean, it's like 300,000, it's like three times the amount, but 76,000 seems like just a really big disparity.
In 2021, when this was bid out and we had a winning bidder, the winning bidder bid $27,000. The next bidder was $120,000.
Okay.
The low bidder came back, realized that he probably didn't figure his expenses correctly and said he couldn't do the job.
And I guess that's where lies my concern, that, that ground control has lowballed us to get the job and is wanting to back out.
That's the reason why we've asked to have the second low bidder, so that we don't have to come back in January or June or July after figuring this all out.
Is there any opportunity for negotiation with Brantley?
Probably not.
Okay.
Because if we did that, we'd, we'd have to put it out for bid again.
Okay.
Go to Mr. Jolly, then Ms. Toy, back to, or Mr. Donovan.
I, I can't help but think that we are teeing it up.
Right.
An opportunity to abuse the system here. Because it wouldn't take much for the second lowest bidder to approach the first lowest bidder and say, hey, tap out. It'll be a $76,000 windfall for me. I'll subcontract you to do other work or something of that nature. Does that matter? I, I mean, it's just one of these things where it just seems like this is bad practice to set up and it invites, it invites a bigger expenditure. I just, I hate this process. I mean, honestly, like, and I, I understand the logic to why you're doing it and pursuing this. I don't think it's in the best interest of the city to do it this way.
Council, that's fine.
I'm not giving you a hard time.
No, I understand.
The world we live in is, is, is people looking for opportunities to get more and consume more and these meetings are public. And I guarantee both bidders are watching them. And again, Doug, it's not you, I get it.
I totally understand. And I, we can go with the low bidder. I'm okay with that. The concern of the department was, the last time that we did this, that we had a huge discrepancy. We lost time. But we can put it out for bid again if the low bidder walks away from it.
Okay. It's a point, if I made, Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore, when would we know that, if, if the bidder would walk away?
Though it was.
Timing, yeah.
God, I got to believe it was June.
June?
June or July.
So right when you're starting, yeah.
Yeah, and we would start this program April-ish, I mean, a lot depends, the spring, it depends.
Okay.
Um, but we figured out with him, that we were into May before he figured out he wasn't gonna, we, we knew he wasn't gonna do it.
So is this the one I heard you say, or was it prior number eight, that we had to do it, um, that we use our own staff?
DPWs had to do this the last two years.
Could they step in while you're doing a bid then, possibly?
Yes.
I, like a couple of my colleagues, I'm concerned about that price dif- difference and, you know, shenanigans that possibly could go on. Um, so, for that reason, I, I just, you know, maybe we could look at Councilman Dominic, or, or Donovan, and see if um, there's, there's another way to put this, not to harm you or the department, but just so we don't get in the practice of, you know, possibly doing that and then having those kinds of things happen, yet crippling you out, you know what, you know what I'm trying to say to you, sir?
I understand.
Yes, yes, but if we have people that can step in, save the day, um, a little bit, how do we assure that we, there's no assurance that we know that these folks would or wouldn't do the job, right? I mean, do you do anything in that contract to trigger them something, or?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, okay, it's just the way of the world right now, probably, I guess. Okay, I'm, thank you for answering those questions, sir.
Since, since
Yeah, please.
There would be, what's being described, a criminal offense, by the way, just
Okay.
I'm not just suggesting that anybody, but if they are watching and anybody wanted to get, that is a criminal offense, it could be prosecuted if that happened.
Okay.
Approving it, of course, is always the issue, as Mr. Jolly would know, uh, but that is a criminal offense for the bidders to get together and rig a bid.
Sure, okay, thank you, thank you.
Councilwoman Donovan?
Thank you, Mr. President, and this is, my comment is no reflection on you, Mr. Moore. This is why I'm so frustrated when bidders bid on something, or vendors bid on something, and they don't show up to city council meetings. There's a countless amount of times where people bid on thousands and thousands of dollars of contracts, and they do not show up to city ca, city council meetings, and we can't ask questions, and again, that's no reflection on you or DPW, I know you work really hard. But I want to send a message, if you're going to bid on something in the city of Livonia, you should show up to the meetings, so we can ask these really great questions that some of my colleagues have asked. Um, so with that being said, I'm going to take this off of consent, and I'm going to place on the regular. And I'd hope that, one, if not both of these vendors show up to the meeting, so we can ask questions. And you know what, if we don't ask questions, I don't care, you should still show up to the meeting and be here in the event that council members do have questions. And my last comment is, that's why I've always been frustrated with this process, is we go out and get the lowest bidder, and I don't like the fact that, while we all want to be very conscious of the dollars that we send, spend, we want to be conscious of the dollars we spend, sometimes hiring the lowest bidder is not the best idea for us, and we actually end up spending more money and more time in agony, and we end up wasting more taxpayer dollars, so I've always had a sort of a fundamental disagreement, and I know it's not a perfect system, but with this process of only hiring the lowest bid, lowest bid for a contractor, it should be the lowest qualified bidder, and a part of me wants to offer an approving for Brently Development. I know it's eighty-seven thousand dollars, so it's more than the forty-nine thousand dollar contract, but we might get better service. And we might not put our hard-working men and women in the predicament where all of a sudden in May, you're scrambling to figure out who's going to cut our grass. So that frustrates me, but I'm going to ask that uh, this be taken off consent, and I expect that one, if not both, bidders show up to the next meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Donovan, let me just, uh, if I may, just touch base quickly on it, because this is kind of in par with my day job, so I could hopefully, and Mr. Moore, forgive me if I'm off tangent here, but um, the bidding online website is Mitten, it's, it's through the state of Michigan. It's basically like an eBay for government bids, right? And sometimes you get ten bidders, sometimes you get one bidder. And right now, I think you can attest to this, that it's the Wild West on Mitten. Uh, for instance, we had a generator in a different, you know, during my day job, that one bidder came in for something that we had estimated at a hundred thousand for three hundred, and we laughed at it to say, hey, they're trying to get their vacation cottage. So that, we do have, let me just ask these questions, it might uh, inform my colleagues and make them feel better, but in the event that the first bidder goes belly up, we have escape clauses for both, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And you're going to be managing the contract, so in that event that happens, you have the ability to pull out of the contracts if they're not performing, correct?
Correct.
So, there's a lot of checks and balances, there's, I'm assuming there's probably bid bonds on this, and everything that goes in with the legalities, there is some protections on us, but I know where you're coming from, because I've had it, and sometimes you just gotta, you know, you could do reference checks, and we can go from there, but, you know, there are some checks and balances that we can make sure that we leverage our employees. Uh, I'll go to uh, Councilwoman Toye, then back to Councilmember Donovan.
I'll just be real quick, um, on our agendas, I'm noticing that, um, it used to be we had the names underneath these, um, you know, if, if we could look into that, that, that may be helpful, because then, when they appear in the audience or not, we can kind of identify them and know where they're from, and that kind of thing, I, I realize it's on the computer, but it's also helpful to have them on the paper.
Consider that done.
Thank you very, very much.
Mr. Chair, not to belabor the grass cutting of two thousand twenty-four, but I, I definitely understand the council president's perspective, and, but I guess my thing is, I want to avoid is putting you guys in the situation where, again, here you're scrambling in the middle of the year, when you've already got countless other projects DPW and your team are working so hard on, and then all of a sudden, you gotta figure out how to cut hundreds, a hundred and thirty-six acres of, of grass? I have a hard enough time cutting my own grass, let alone that much, so I want to avoid that from happening, and give you guys the tools and resources you need to serve our residents. Thanks, Mr. President.
So that is on regular, if we could
Counsel.
Councilwoman Wazinski?
Um, I just had a question, um, in terms of the reference checks, um, has Ground Control worked on a municipal level on projects of this size before?
No, but few do. We've got to just run through and check their, uh, check the references and see who they work for. Some of it was uh, commercial properties. And our parks are, would be considered more commercial than residential.
Thank you.
Anything else from counsel? So we have an approving on regular, and if we could get the contractors at the meeting on the twelfth, that would be great.
Okay.
Anything else from counsel, seeing none? Uh, audience? Yes. Name and address.
Margaret Earl, three-one-five-four-five Pembroke. Uh, I just wondered what was the difference between the second bid and the third lowest bid, to see what the differentiation there was?
I believe we only had two bidders, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, we only had eight bidders.
Can I answer? Um, Mr. Chair, okay. Uh, for the one-year contract, it was an additional, uh, nine thousand, roughly. So, over the, over the course of two years, a little, about eighteen thousand. So, jumps from ninety-eight thousand to one-seventy-four-five to one-ninety-two-eight.
And then, what are the subsequent bids?
Uh, so then, the third, the fourth one, only committed to a one-year at one-oh-six, but then the eighth bidder was all the way up to three-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand. So three times, over three times the amount.
Yeah.
So they're all over the place, and that was my question for Mr. Moore, why is there such a disparity? That's why I brought that up.
Basically COVID. COVID, COVID began the huge price increases and all this.
But yeah, that's what struck my concern, was the difference.
All right, well, we've an approving on regular, anything else from the audience? Seeing none, we will move on to item number nine, which is an award, uh, bid received through the tri, tri-county Public Purchasing Cooperative Agreement from the Department of Public Works for gasoline and diesel fuel from a period of February first, two thousand twenty-four through January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Mr. Moore?
Counsel, this is the fuel and diesel for the city equipment. Uh, the funding is in the two thousand twenty-four budget. It will also be in the two thousand twenty-five budget. Uh, the payments will come from DPW, LFD and LPD. Uh, the city consumes approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand gallons of gas, hundred-and-ten thousand gallons of diesel. Um, the way that the bid is written, it's a, a cooperative, Sterling Heights puts the bid out, and we take part in the, the consortium pricing. The vendor is based on the amount of supply that's coming in, if it's over five thousand gallons, it's from one vendor, if it's below, it's from another vendor. Um, basically, the way it's writ, it's, the fuel, price of fuel is figured, it's the per gallon wholesale rack average is published daily by the Oil Price Information Service. Detroit Rack Average, plus a daily delivery fee, uh, basically, it's a wholesale price. State tax is taken off of it, but we do have to pay some federal tax.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Counsel?
Approving.
I have an approving, is that on consent?
Sure.
Approving on consent, any other questions from counsel? Seeing none, any questions from the audience? Seeing none, we're going to move on to item number ten.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Which is a request to accept a stormwater facilities maintenance agreement from the Engineering Division from Aligned Equity Group LLC in conjunction with the construction of a storm drain system that provides adequate drainage for the newly constructed ClearPath Assisted Living located at three-three-five-seven-nine Eight Mile Road in the northeast uh, section of, quarter section of, section four. Mr. Zalinsik?
Evening, Council President, council members, I'll see if I can follow up with the Doug Moore Reverb Show, uh, but uh, thank you, this is just a housekeeping issue, obviously, the ClearPath was constructed over there on Eight Mile by Kmart. We're just trying to get the stormwater agreement closed up, it takes a while for, uh, you know, they had the right information on the forum for us to accept. So we're just looking for your approval, then, once it's uh, accepted by the clerk, it'll get sent on to Wayne County for execution, uh, and recording, thank you.
Counsel?
Mr. Chair.
Vice President?
I'd be happy to offer approval on consent.
We've approved on consent, any more comments from counsel? Any comments from the audience? You have an approving on consent? All right, Mr. Zalinsik, we got number eleven, which is a request to accept a stormwater facilities maintenance agreement from the Engineering Department from Doran, Lucasell and Rodica Moore in conjunction with the construction of a storm drain system that provides adequate drainage for newly construction, more outdoor storage. Mr. Zalinsik?
Again, same thing, uh, project's been completed, we're just trying to do the paperwork to uh, close out the project and get the stormwater agreement in place, in case they're unable to fulfill their obligation. The city would come out, and obviously, they would be taxed for the uh, work if necessary, but hopefully, they'll maintain their facility, and again, looking for your approval.
Counsel? Mr. Morgan?
I'll offer an approving on consent.
We have an approving on consent, anything else from counsel? Seeing none, anything else from the audience? Seeing none. That concludes, but really fast, I, I, there, this is a rookie council president mistake, and I just wanted to make sure, because I think our audience members are still here, but I never went to the audience if they had questions on item number one or two. Seeing none? Thank you, I'm just making sure. Um, with that, I'm going to go back to the audience for communication for anything not on the agenda. Any audience communication? Seeing none? Counsel?
We're done.
Councilwoman Toye, take it away.
We're going to adjourn, right?
Yeah, did, you, you give the, the slogan away.
Okay, um, let's move to adjourn.
There we go, good night, Livonia. You gotta come up with a good one, like, what is it, Seacrest Out or something?